Call the meeting to order. We'll note that all commissioners are present. First item of business is the Order of Business. Are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colley.
There is one change I would like to make. The last item on the agenda is a development agreement for Woodhaven, first edition. I believe that's substantially informed, but we do not have a signed development agreement at this point. I would ask that you would move that from this agenda and bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay. Are there any other changes?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 6B under Engineering, the Cost Participation and Maintenance Addendum for the State Avenue Railroad Bridge. The DOT had sent us a revised version of that, but it sounds like that is not complete as well, and they're still working through some changes with the railroad on that agreement. So I'd strike that from this agenda as well.
6B is out. Anything else? All right. There are no other changes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Order of Business with the two changes that were just mentioned.
Still moved.
Second. We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. Motion carries. Next item then is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to the Non-Timetable Agenda. And Item A is Tobacco Sales Ordinance Change, and Mr. Colley will introduce that.
Mr. President and Commissioners, this proposed ordinance was requested by one of our convenience store operators in Dickinson. Currently, Section 2506-020 of the Dickinson City Code makes it an offense for a minor to possess, sell, purchase, attempt to purchase, smoke, or use tobacco products. And this ordinance, as it is proposed or requested by one of our convenience store owners, would strike the word "sell" from the list of offenses for a minor to commit. Minor would still be prohibited from possessing, purchasing, attempting to purchase, smoke, or use tobacco products, but would be allowed to sell those products in the event a minor was employed by a gas station or a convenience store or some other facility that had a tobacco license. We have discussed this amongst city staff. We do have some concerns with respect to tobacco enforcement, particularly minors, whether a minor that may be working at a gas station would be able to or have the experience to deny a sale of tobacco to one of their classmates or somebody else who was not authorized to purchase that product. We also did have some, or we did have a compliance check that our police department did perform on our tobacco sellers. And if memory serves, I believe we had seven or eight tobacco sellers that did get cited for selling tobacco to minors, just within the past couple of weeks. So I don't think this ordinance comes with you, or comes before you with a recommendation from city staff, but we would put it to you and invite your comments and discussion. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Is this 1574?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Well, at this time, we'd invite the public to comment regarding Ordinance 1574. If you would like to comment, just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1574? Okay, there's no one that wishes to comment on 1574? Are there any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Mr. President, in the past, I have brought this up under, from concerned business owners asking me to bring this up, and I know it went down to a no vote before. The thing that I guess I'm concerned with is we're the only city in the state that has an ordinance like that. And our compliance level, according to the state American Lung Association, the state prevention-wise, we're an A, and smoke-free, we're an A. The only thing that the state fails in is tobacco taxes. And that's right off their website. To me, I see it as an undue hindrance to the business owners, especially the small ones. But if it's an issue with the police department and some of our citizens, I can see the concern.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Any other comments or questions by commissioners?
I guess I don't have super-strong feelings about it. My daughter's 16 years old. She works in retail. She has lots of responsibility with making sure that not only is customer service there, but the till comes outright. At 16 years old, you have your driver's license. If I could wave a wand and a 16-year-old was selling tobacco and they sold it to a minor, I'd have their driver's license taken away for six months. But you can only do that as a parent, and I guess that's what I would do with my child if they worked in this environment and did that. We have the checks in place. If you are a minor and you're willing to get cigarettes, you're going to get them one way or another. Seems unfair to ding a responsible 16- and 17-year-old. That means that you're, in the last half of your sophomore year and through your junior and senior year of high school, that's the time where you are deciding what your future is going to be like, what college you want to attend, or what direction your life wants to take. So there's a lot of responsibility that 16- and 17-year-olds are faced with. Peer pressure, we're still going to have the tobacco checks. We're still going to be able to enforce the law. And I think that in this hiring environment, you have a lot of 16- and 17-year-olds that are filling these types of positions, or would fill these type of positions. If you're 18 years old, you have the opportunity to go to work in the oil field and make, you know, two and three times as much money. And so I think from a labor standpoint, we're probably relying a lot more heavily on our teenagers to fill retail positions in our community. When you've got some of the lowest unemployment numbers in the nation, you're not having a 30-year-old that wants to go to work in a convenience store. So we need to be able to filter it down for those kids to fulfill those positions. I think that if you are responsible enough to show up to work on time, do your job, balance the till, and you can ring up any other sale in that store, this one is not going to change that. I had an opportunity to speak with several of the convenience stores in town, and an overwhelming number of them have in their employee manual that if you are caught selling tobacco to a minor, it is a fireable offense. So at 16 and 17, even though you may be caving into peer pressure to sell to a minor, you're also going to lose your job if you do that. So that would weigh heavy on making that choice as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Altman, anyone else? You know, I asked for public comment before this started, and you were here.
I realize we were speaking about the ordinance.
We'll allow some more comment, but we'll let the commissioners finish if they're done so. Is there other comments by commissioners? Okay, we'll open it again to the public. Anybody wishing to comment on 1574 may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jennifer Schaefer. I'm the Tobacco Prevention Coordinator with the Southwestern District Health Unit. It was brought to our attention that a couple businesses would like to lower the age to sell tobacco to the public, to 16. And ordinances were put in place to protect the public. Becky Bezesski, who is here today, of the Southwest Coalition of Safe Communities, along with Greg's son, Rick Shirey, many others, did put this policy in place in 2001 to protect our youth. So, and as recently as 2012, we did work on that with the city council to make stiffer penalties for those selling to the minors. So this is to protect the health and recognizing that illegal tobacco purchase and the use of that by minors is a significant problem in Dickinson, as you just stated. Their intent was to reduce the accessibility of tobacco to minors. It is a tough position to put 16-, 17-year-old kids in when another 17-year-old comes in wishing to try to get that product. It's their peers. It is very tough for them to say no to them. So that is the intent of those policies. The Youth Risk Behavior Study, which is a statewide study done with our kids in the state, shows a steady decline of youth use rate, and we hope to keep that declining. National data does show that 95% of adult smokers begin smoking before the age of 21. 80% of them tried before the age of 18. So in this 2005 study, they found that 82% of the adolescent smokers obtained their cigarettes from others. Most of them were friends. So I just want you to consider that and know that a lot of hard work was put in place to keep our youth protected, to keep the workers protected, excuse me. And so we feel that's very important to leave that in place at 18. And I guess if you have any questions, I'm open to that, too. Thank you.
I do have some questions.
Yes.
According to my research, we're the only city in North Dakota. Are you different here than the rest of the state?
Right. You are right, Councilman Decker. We are the only city in the state that has this policy in place, and...
And if this was such a huge issue, why isn't this being pushed throughout the state, then?
Well, there are other communities looking at enacting those policies. They're working with their city council as well.
I just think this is an unneeded ordinance. I mean, we are, our youth here are just as responsible as anybody else in the state.
Mm-hmm. We do have responsible youth here.
And I know that. And you know that because you know me.
Mm-hmm. Right. And you bring up a good point. I just think it's putting them in an unfair position, just as it would if they would allow someone that was 18 or 19 to sell alcohol over the counter to people. It's putting them in a situation that this isn't fair to them. What you find is more kids using when the youth can sell to them. They know immediately in your city who will sell to them.
But the penalty still exists. If a 16-year-old would be hired, as Commissioner Clayton Altman said, they'd lose their job. Most of these policies.
In some stores, they do. In some stores in this city, they do lose their job. So...
The kids in this town know what 30-year-old at the convenience store will sell them cigarettes to. It doesn't matter that it's their peer. They know where and how, and that's why, you know, you, when the task force comes out and we have offenses, the reason that your underage buyers are able to go in and purchase and we find the offending convenience store is because that person isn't doing their job in the first place. And it doesn't matter that that person was 18 or over, or 16 or 17. It comes down to actually doing their job and having the responsibility to check the ID and push that through.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Colley, you said, when was that last compliance check made?
Mr. Steiner, I don't have the exact date. I think it was probably a week or two ago. And...
No, the most recent one that we did with the city was in December.
Okay. And there were seven or eight that failed the compliance?
There were, I believe we had two this time. I'd have to look, but I did send the results to Sean and...
Okay. Do you think the, with the invitation of 16- and 17-year-olds selling it, that would improve or get worse?
I believe it would get worse.
Thank you.
Mr. Colley.
Mr. President, Commissioner Steiner, I may be confusing my compliance checks. I think there was a alcohol compliance check that was recently completed, and that had about seven or eight violations. The tobacco was done longer ago and only had the two violations. I apologize.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to comment?
My name is Becky Bezesski. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I was on the original committee and have been a part of the tobacco since it started here in Dickinson, group that has worked on this. And we worked on the ordinance. We worked very hard and very long on trying to develop that ordinance. And the reason that particular part is in that ordinance is a couple of us had gone to a training in CADCA, which is a Community Anti-Drug Coalition Committee group that exists out there nationwide. And we went to the training, and this is one of the things, the topics that was there, people that are working on similar ordinances. And this is one that they brought up. It doesn't mean that the 16-year-olds or 17-year-olds cannot work in that field. They can work there, but they just can't be the one that sells the tobacco. So if they come in for candy pop, cigarettes, newspapers, gas, whatever, they can sell that. It's just when they get to the point where somebody wants to buy a carton or a couple packs of cigarettes, they wouldn't be the ones that'd be able to sell it. Very similar to the alcohol ordinance, where they can work in places where alcohol's being sold in a restaurant or in a restaurant, they just can't be the one that pours, mixes, or sells it. So it's very similar, and they do that for a reason, to cut back mainly because of the peer pressure, mainly because we know that when they have the younger ones in there, due to the compliances and that, they are getting sold because it's their friends that are coming in. So that is why we put that in there. We are the only one in the state that has that. But to be honest with you, we are the only one in the state that has the drug, or had the Drug-Free Communities Grant and all that, where we worked on policy and ordinances. And so nobody else in the state has gone that far. Tobacco's gone the furthest, but that's one area that nobody else has picked up on. But that doesn't mean they're still not working on it currently. Because they like it, but nobody else has put it in there. They never even actually thought of it, some of them. So we are the first and the only, which is for us a kudos, because we did get it in many years back, so...
The only difference with alcohol versus the cigarette is that you typically have a bartender that is mixing the drinks. And so if you are a server and you're of age to serve that drink, you go place your drink order, get your drinks, and then you take them to the table. If you are underage, you place your drink order, and the bartender will mix them and then deliver the drink. So there's somebody on staff to do that. If you're a 16- or 17-year-old and you're working in the convenience store and it's your shift, they actually either have to cut back your hours if there's not somebody 18-year-old or to be able to work with you, or double up on the shift. So I think that is the issue here. And the cigarettes are still all around that 16- and 17-year-old during the entire shift. Whether they can pick the pack up and ring it up or not, they're still exposed to the people that are coming in and purchasing that item. It's still going across the table in front of them, except they have to have somebody come over and ring up that particular item. So it is different than the way that alcohol is delivered to the customers.
With the exception of the convenience stores, like the Bellfield Superpumper, the Richardson C Store, they have alcohol that's sold there, but only people over 21 can ring that up. They have the same situation. They have minors working there. They just can't work in that area, over at that end. Otherwise, they can ring up everything, but if they bring beer out to purchase or some other source of liquor, they can't ring it up. They have to go to the person that's old enough. So we have similar situations, it's just not quite as many.
Other comments, questions? Thank you, Ms. Bezesski. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment?
Gentlemen, I'm Captain Dave Wilkie with the Dickinson Police Department. Chief Dustin Doster could not be here tonight, but he wanted me to express that we do not support changing it. One of the things that we're going to be looking at with the change is that there's nothing set in place for charging a 16-year-old with sale of tobacco to another minor. We would need to make an ordinance change, so that would be one consideration we would need to look at. Should that change be made? Also, we do also look at it in the same respect as the sale of alcohol. Nobody under 21 is allowed to sell or deliver alcohol to anybody in a bar, even though somebody at the age 18 can work there. We look at the tobacco in the same manner, that nobody, if you cannot possess it at under 18, we support that you should not be able to sell it.
Thank you, Captain. Is there anybody else? If there's no one else, the hearing then is closed, and invite additional comments or questions by commissioners. If there are no other comments, then your motion is either to approve first reading or not approve first reading. Anybody care to move a motion?
I move to make motion to approve first reading ordinance 1574.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, just to see what happens.
All right. We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? There's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
No.
Chair votes no. The motion carries three to two. So first reading is approved. We'll go to Item B then, which is a rezoning petition for Barron's Vista. We do have timetable, agenda items at 5:00. It's 5:00 to 5:00, so we probably won't get very far on this, but at least we'll start. This would be the second reading of Ordinance Number 1573, and Mr. Colley will let you introduce this further.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. This ordinance does provide for rezoning of the property that is known as Barron's Vista. It is approximately 157 acres, excuse me, 157 acres for one parcel and 125 acres for a second parcel. It is a rezoning from agricultural to a mix of low-density residential, medium-density residential, community commercial, general commercial, and public. The ordinance does make this rezoning conditional. It is conditional upon the owner entering into a development agreement with the city for the whole of the property, as well as providing access points for Fairway Street and one other access point to the south, either 30th Avenue West or 50th Avenue West. The owner does recognize in this ordinance that it may be required to construct access points on public rights of way that are not under the ownership or control of the owner. There may be section lines or other public right of way that has been dedicated on which those access points would be constructed. The ordinance rezoning is also time-limited, requires that within 45 days of the final adoption of the rezoning, the owner would submit a grading application, and that the grading of the Phase 1 area of the property would be completed within 14 months of the approval of the grading permit. In the event that any of these conditions would fail, the rezoning of this property would automatically revert back to an agricultural zone without any further action by the city. So we would just need to schedule that in all of our calendars as to when the deadline would happen, and then would be subject to, the owner would be subject to completing that portion of the project in order to retain its rezoning of the property. Did have a conversation with the owner and legal counsel for the owner, and I believe that they are in agreement with the conditions that are put within this ordinance. So we would put it before the commission. If second reading does pass, this would be the effective date of the rezone, and all the timelines would run from today. Be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Are there any comments or questions for him?
So even, Mr. Colley, even with the conditions in effect, it would be rezoned today. It would just lose that zoning designation if the development agreement did not have compliance.
That's correct, Commissioner Jackson. On all of our maps, it would change the color on the map and change the entitlement, but we would schedule out those deadlines, and it would automatically revert back to an egg zone if the project was not completed.
Are there other questions by commissioners or comments? Like to take comments and questions by commissioners, and then we would leave this item and go to the timetable agenda, and when we come back to it, we'd take comments from the public. So is there anything else by commissioners?
Well, I have a question. It seems to me, and if I'm mischaracterizing this, somebody please correct me, but it seems to me that our interest in this is the representation that there will be some more affordable homes constructed as part of this development. I've heard 250, 280, homes less than $300,000. If that is in fact our main interest, could that requirement be made part of the development agreement for X number of homes in some kind of a price range?
Commissioner Jackson, I think whatever terms the commission would want to put into a development agreement, we can talk with the developer and negotiate those terms. I think from a practical perspective, it seems to me that it's going to be something that's going to be very difficult to enforce. You know, this is 280 acres of property and won't be developed for some period of time. It may be five or 10 years before the property would be completely built out. And whether or not that 250 to $280,000 price point holds for five or 10 years, I guess I don't know. I think that would be something we would have to get into some detail with the owner as to what their expectations are and what commitments they would be willing to make and what the remedy would be from the city's perspective if they were not able to maintain that sort of price point. At this point, I'm not sure, we haven't put the development agreement together, and I'm not sure what the remedy... I'm not sure what the remedy is the city would be able to enforce in the event that that condition would fail.
I can think of some other complications as well. But I do think it's important that we recognize what's been represented to us somehow.
Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll leave this item and go to our timetable agenda, and at 5:00 PM we have a public hearing regarding the street vacation, and Mr. Kubus, our city engineer, is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, before you, is a request to vacate some city right-of-way, and the vacation request is for Boyce Drive. No one's probably familiar with Boyce Drive. It's an unbuilt street in the Northridge First Edition. For a point of reference, if you're on Tenth Avenue East, north of Fourteenth Street, north of the cemetery, and then west of there, a couple of blocks, Seventeenth Street ends, and somewhere after it ends would be where Boyce Drive is. It's one lot long, a north-south street. Right now, the ground to the south of Boyce Street has been platted without accommodations for Boyce Drive to continue south to connect to Fourteenth Street. So from engineering's perspective, the right-of-way and the potential utilities that could have been installed in Boyce Drive really would have no connection point to any other infrastructure in the city, and the engineering department would recommend approval of this vacation request. Be open for any questions you might have.
This is a public hearing, so we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone that wishes to comment regarding this street vacation may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody that wishes to comment? If there's no comments, then we'll declare the public hearing closed, and if there are questions or comments by city commissioners? Okay. Mr. Coling, is this Resolution eleven dash twenty fifteen?
That's correct, yes.
So would there be a motion regarding Resolution eleven?
Mr. President, I'd move to approve street vacation.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Well, we got six or seven minutes until our next item, so we'll go back to Barron's Vista, and we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. You may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Is there anybody from the public?
Hello, my name's Malwanko, and I'm here on behalf of Jody Arthod. He owns the land directly south of this proposed development. I just wanted to bring to your attention that for this meeting and for the meeting that happened three weeks ago, he did not receive the notification that was supposed to go out that something was happening around his land. So I just wanted you to know that there might be other landowners that didn't get notification and aren't here to speak. On behalf of Jody, he has mentioned before that he is reluctant to give the right-of-way needed for a thirtieth or fiftieth, which would be the second access point. Mostly, the concern is that they've discussed building affordable houses. We're worried that that means cheap houses that will have poor siding and will look awful in twenty years. He's been here for a while, and he's seen that happen, so he's concerned about that. So speaking for myself now, just as a citizen of Dickinson, I've asked the Barron's people, they've mentioned that they think the houses should be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. And then I asked them once what size house they're looking at, and they said eighteen hundred square feet to two thousand square feet. So if I do that math in my head, they think they can build these houses for a hundred dollars per square foot. If you talk to anybody who's built house or any realtors around here, it's generally a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred dollars per square foot. So personally, I'm concerned that they're going to be built pretty cheaply and won't hold up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to comment?
President Johnson, while we're waiting for people to attend, I just wanted to clear one thing up, clarify one point. We don't send out invitations to adjacent landowners for a city commission meeting. We do do that during planning and zoning. So there, so Mr. Arthod didn't get a letter because there was never one sent.
Okay. Anyone else wish to comment? You know, we've got four minutes before we go to our next item. We'll make sure there's plenty of time to comment, but anyone have four minutes worth of comments, four minutes or less? If there's going to be no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll be done. All right, public hearing is closed. Are there comments by commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I haven't changed my feelings that I've had all the way through this, and I don't think I'm going to go through the detail that I did two weeks ago, but I'm more convicted every week that goes by here that this isn't the subdivision we need right now, and that there are also location concerns with it. You know, if it does pass, if we think we can do something about the promise that was made about the cost of housing, I'd like to pursue that, although I think that would be very difficult to do myself. But I think that's what's leading us to where we are. So I would just ask the rest of you to not only look at where we've come, but where we are today in Dickinson with development, to take a good, hard look at it, and look at the big picture of it.
Mr. Jackson, this document that I'm holding that says estimated City of Dickinson dwelling units yet to be constructed has just over seventy-six hundred units. I think you talked about this two weeks ago. You didn't have the exact numbers yet, but it appears we have authorized up to seventy-six hundred units at this point, and is that what this means?
That's essentially what it means. That's work that Mr. Cortan started, I think, over a year ago. Staff has spent more time on it this winter, trying to make it as accurate as possible. It's a moving target, as we said a couple of weeks ago. And I think I said a couple of weeks ago that probably fifty percent of what you see on there doesn't have much hope of near-term development. The balance is at many various phases. But it's just one metric for us to look at as we make these decisions about quality growth in town, and when we're not going fast enough, when we might be going too fast.
And the other document that came out today from, I think it was from engineering, says we have over, well, we have four hundred and seventy-one acres of land that's available for commercial development. Is that the way we would interpret this?
Mr. President, that's correct. Again, what percentage of that acreage would realistically be developed, we don't know, but that's a pretty good estimate of the total platted, zoned, commercial acres in town right now.
Engineer Kubus, would you also remind the commission how you dealt with PUD acres in both of those documents?
The PUD acres are a little more difficult. You need to do a little bit of digging, but in the document, when the PUDs are recorded, it does specify which lots and blocks are zoned for general commercial or R1, R2, R3. And so those acreages, and that's not in a large amount of developments right now. PUDs are a fairly recent thing to Dickinson, so there's only a handful of them. But it's been broken out for the commercial acreages in a development that is a PUD or residential as well. So those acres are, the acres or the dwelling units are, I think, a very good estimate of the total numbers.
Okay, well, we'll break right there and go to our five-ten timetable, which has to do with the telecommunications tower, and Mr. Millstone is going to introduce this item.
Mr. President, Commission members, this is a request for a telecommunications tower special use permit for Buell Consulting. The site is situated at twenty-one sixty-five Empire Drive, and the property is about three hundredths of an acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, subject to conditions, and myself and my staff are here to answer any questions.
Twenty-one sixty-five, what is that, that address right now? Twenty-one sixty-five Empire Road?
It's actually behind the West River Community Center.
What, when you say behind, what side of it?
There's a big hill behind it. Yeah, behind would be to the west.
To the west?
Between that and the hospital.
And can you describe what this tower's going to look like, or please describe what it'll?
I think I'll let the project manager, which is Mr. Josephson, handle that.
Steve Josephson, city-county planner. I'm sorry, what was the question again, is what's in the vicinity?
Well, no, what, describe what the tower is going to look like. We now know it's on the hill just west of the community center.
It's going to look like a flagpole. It's going to be done up as a flagpole, and there's actually going to be a flag that's going to, that's going to be on it. It's the new, it's the stealth technology for cell towers where they try to make them look like, look like something else. And in this case, when they negotiated with the Park District, the request was to make this look like a flagpole, even down to the, to a flag for it. And I think they had some agreement, the first flag was going to be paid for by Parks, and then from then on in, they'd be responsible for that. And the Parks Department has indicated, Parks Board has indicated that like any other flagpole, they want to keep that lit, you know, lit at all times. So this won't be your typical cell tower, your typical monopole, or your typical, your typical lattice one. It's going to resemble, it will be a cell, it will be a flagpole.
Is the Park District being compensated for this?
Yes, there's a lease between, between the Park District and the, and in this case, Verizon. And I believe the representative for Buell is here, if you have any questions for him about this. But yes, they entered into a lease agreement for this.
Do we have a rendering of this, what it's going to look like? I mean, you know, you told us it's going to look just like a flagpole, but...
I believe there's something in your, in your packet that shows something that looks like a flagpole. If Brandon is, if Brandon is here, I'd ask him to come forward, and if he has something that can show that to pass around. But they did, they did show something that resembled a flagpole in their simulation.
Yes, sir. Brandon St. Mitchell with Buell Consulting. We did provide a, they call a photo simulation, where they placed the tower and the shelter in the location proposed, and a before-and-after type of photo. And we, I do have construction drawings with me also that do depict what the tower will look like.
Well, I'm not, you know, so much interested in the construction drawings, but if you have the rendering of what it's supposed to look like when it's completed, I'd certainly like to see that. My concern is, this is, this is a great site, and I hate to put a tower on it. Do you, do you gentlemen see this?
There's a picture in it.
Is it in there?
It's hard to see.
I missed it. Do you know the amount of the financial consideration that the Park District's receiving?
That is still being worked out with the Park District.
What's the term of the lease going to be?
Our standard lease agreement is a twenty-five-year lease with a five-year option to renew periods. The Park Board had a meeting on Friday. I have been in contact with them, just awaiting to hear their minutes and notes from their meeting last Friday.
Why this site? Why not some other hill?
The location is very specific. Verizon's radio frequency engineer, they'll pick out locations that'll benefit the city. Instead of putting three towers, they'll pick one location, put the tower there, and it'll, they have propagation maps, is what they call them, and they want to service the area as best as possible with one tower.
Could this be on the roof of the community center, as opposed to the hill behind it?
That was taken into consideration, but the elevation of the tower is very critical. Usually when we're dealing with cellphone towers, you're looking at one hundred and fifty, two hundred, two hundred and fifty feet. In this circumstance, the, we want to get the most elevation as we can in this location, and the ninety-nine foot would be above and beyond what the center would provide.
So the hill is higher than the rooftop of the community center?
Correct.
Can't be much higher.
I guess I'd have to give you exact numbers. I could take a look at it, I guess.
President Johnson, I have a question.
Mr. Castle?
Did you look at the hill that's just to the north of this site, that currently has a water storage tank? That would be much higher than this location and just a few feet north of it. Was that a site considered?
Yes. Just to kind of give you a little process, what we do is we go out and we scout sites for Verizon's RF. We come back to them with multiple candidates, and then they pick, they use their, you know, they have sophisticated computer programs or what, and they'll pick the best location for that, and that's what they come up with. And we just go off what they tell us.
I think this is one of about three or four new sites happening in and adjacent to the community right now for Verizon. Is that correct?
Yes, yep.
There have been several that have come before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also City Commission in various parts of the city and the extraterritorial zone. One of the things we looked at in this case is on Empire Drive on the other side of it, that's the NDSU extension, extension over there. This is far enough away, being on the north side, that there won't be, that there shouldn't, that it would mitigate its impacts on any residential property because it's not adjacent to residential property. It's surrounded by the park, by the, by the community center, the West River Rec Center, and then to the north of it is that, is the NDSU extension property.
There was also a question raised at Planning and Zoning about the hospital's helipad, which is just west of this location, and that apparently was taken care of.
Yeah, they did not object.
Yes, and the only thing they requested was to place a red light on top, which we are revising our drawings to do that.
So this is directly west. That would mean, if this is a twenty-five-year lease, there will be no other buildings that would be sighted than at that location.
Where the tower sits.
Right.
There, the Park District is actually building a concession stand restroom right next to our tower, and our tower shelter is being built to match the exterior of their concession stand. And that is part of the project also. We're working on figuring out a way to help them fund this concession stand.
Mr. President, I had a couple of concerns. One was, you know, the photograph here really can't... One was, you know, the photograph here, really can't tell what it, what it looks like. I mean, it looks better than what, in my mind, when it first came in as a cell tower, and then you put flags on it. It does look like a telescopic type of cell tower and so on. So I feel better, you know, the way I think it's gonna look if I had better pictures. My other concern is with the size of the property up there, and I think maybe this is where the mayor is coming from, is that, you know, there may be other community buildings that we might wanna propose to put out there. And with that being the case, we might run into a problem with a 25-year lease. Unless there's something that leased, that we'd ever go ahead with some type of facility there, you guys would move that tower at your expense, not the city's. I don't know if that's part of your concern, Mayor, or...
Well, there was just an editorial in the weekend Dickinson Press saying we ought to be looking at event centers. Well, I think one of the possible sites of an event center, even when we cited the recreational building there over 10 years ago, was that there's enough land, possibly enough land, that you could do an event center west of the, the community center. But if, I was unaware of the Park Board talking about a concessions building out there, too. I mean, if they put a concession building out there, you're, you're gonna restrict what you can do. Mr. Kessel, you have some additional information?
I have a comment or a question. I'm sure you've done your research on ownership of that land. Does the Park Board own that land, or does the City of Dickinson own that land?
I believe it's the City of Dickinson Park District.
Because even on your document that you handed out to us, it says licenser is the City of Dickinson. And the City of Dickinson is in North Dakota. Park Districts are a completely separate entity from cities. We're one of the few states where they are separate. So if it says City of Dickinson Park District, that may, I'm just concerned you may be entering into a contract with the wrong political entity.
Okay. I'd have to go back and verify that. But once the lease negotiations are complete, what happens is the paperwork, along with the title report, does go to a law firm to verify, which would come up before a lease was actually signed. So if that is the case, we would move on to working with the city in that case.
Mr. Coling, do you happen to recall who owns the property, the land itself?
Mr. President, Mr. Kessel and I here, we're just looking at our city assessor's information. Obviously, we work closely with the Parks District and, you know, have a good, good working relationship with them. My understanding from the assessor's report is that the, that section there between state and 23rd, the campus area, the eastern part of that campus is owned by the Park District, and the western part of that parcel is owned by the City of Dickinson. If the location that has been identified on the handout that the applicant had here, if that is accurate, I believe this site location would be on property owned by the City of Dickinson. And if that's the case, then we have not seen a lease proposal from the applicant or anything like that. And I think that would probably, we would wanna have that conversation with them prior to approving a special use permit.
You know, my recollection from seeing the application form for the special use permit was the owner was listed as the Park District, and they were the ones who signed off, you know, who signed off on the application as being the owners.
And that application may be incorrect. I think we would want the chance to verify that with our land records.
I, right or wrong, I think the Park District's been dealing with Verizon for two or three years, has it not, on this tower?
Personally, it was a different agent that had the tower that kinda took off with running, so I'm, I'm sorry I can't provide you with all the background. I've only been, it's been two months with this site personally, I guess.
I know that Commissioner Jackson, they've been dealing with the Park District both on this site. In fact, I believe there was, what, there was an article in the newspaper about a year ago or so that discussed that. And there's also another site that's owned by the Park District, that they had discussed putting a, you know, putting a cell tower on. So they've been in conversation for a number of years, or for a couple of years about this. Your recollection is correct.
You know, between the Park District and the city, I think we've really done an excellent job of designing and building on that campus. It, I think it's the envy of many other communities, and I am reluctant to vote for a cell tower going on. Now, I mean, if you can, if it truly looks like a flagpole, and we can hang an American, fly an American flag off that flagpole, I might think differently. But I am real reluctant to vote for a cell tower there. I've got to believe there's a more appropriate place for it. And if the land is actually owned by the city and not the Park District, then we've got, that's a complication. So at the very least, I think we should delay this for one meeting and, and give the city and, and Park District a chance to determine just whose land it is. What do the rest of you think here?
I think that'd be fair, and then I would say, bring in the actual renderings, because what we've received in our packet was black and white and very blurry, so that we can see what it looked like before, what it looks like with the artist's rendering. I know you have that more in photographic form, and that would be very helpful, to actually see the visual of the flagpole.
Sure.
My, my concerns are also with the expansion of the, of the center, or development of that land. I think it has a great potential to meet city needs, and if we're locked in 25 years, I don't, I don't think that would be the right thing to do at this time. Plus, we need to figure out whose land it is.
Just as a side note on that, Verizon does give options. Obviously, they, if they're putting their money into building a tower, they will negotiate down for options to terminate for the, for the landowner also. And I've seen them go as low as 10 years. It'll give the landowner the option to terminate after 10 years. So that's something that Verizon will work with the landowner. 25 years is something that is on their base agreement, but it is negotiable.
So we have a consensus here that we would just defer this for one more meeting and, and give staff a chance to verify the ownership of the land, and perhaps talk to the management at Parks and Recs about, about this, too.
Yes, just a note that I would say is that we do have, Scott Kovach sits on the planning, on the, on the Planning Commission as a representative of the, of the, you know, of the Park, of the Park Board, you know, and, and did vote to, and did vote to approve this. But yes, we'll follow up and make certain, we'll, we will make certain that, that the, that the Park Board is aware of this, and this is on their land. And I think the next meeting, they, it would probably be a good idea to have somebody come and speak for the Park Board, since they, they're listed as the owner for this, so that they can be asked any questions.
Well, I think they could, you know, just talk to us about what their plans for the future land use are there on, on that site. And I, I know, you know, our land is, is limited. We have some great things out there already, the soccer fields and the skate park along with the buildings, and, but there still is a fair amount of, of open land that, you know, we could talk about what's the highest and best use of that. It could be that it just be left open and be a green space. But it would make perhaps a decent location for a smaller event center, too. But at any rate, before we go any further, we ought to know who owns the land.
We'll address those concerns. We'll see those concerns are addressed before this comes back to City Commission.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll keep it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I could say one thing.
Sure, Mr. ...
Are there any other committees that have this type of flagpole in that you could send us photos of? See what it looks like?
Sure. And like you said before, that the renderings, they are, the quality is, I have good quality photos that I can get to, and I can also pull, just a simple Google search would do the same, pull a comparison. Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we've got a 5:15 timetable, agenda item, so that's to hear wastewater infrastructure update by Mike Berg. So, Mr. Berg, welcome.
Thank you, President Johnson, members of the City Commission. Okay. Tonight, I'll start off with a brief overview of the wastewater infrastructure. Then we'll talk about South Dickinson wastewater infrastructure, and I'll close with the Lift Station 5 upgrade. Back when we were working on the comp plan, the first step was to project future development, and that's what this map shows, future projected development. This map is probably three years old now. From this projected development, areas were separated into six different areas, and those future populations and flows were projected. A plan was developed, a general plan, to serve these, this future population. Step one was the construction of the water reclamation facility. Step two, pipelines and a pump station to take existing and future flows from the City of Dickinson out to the water reclamation facility. Step three was pipelines and a pump station to collect and convey wastewater from west and northwest Dickinson. Wastewater from north Dickinson, west of Highway 22, would be brought into this pipeline. Wastewater from northeast Dickinson would be conveyed through the existing infrastructure through town, and wastewater in south Dickinson would be added to that pipeline. This general plan was translated into a detailed list of projects. There's a lot going on in this map, but in general, the solid lines are gravity sewers, and the dash lines are force mains, or pumped flow. To give you an update of where we're at today, the green shaded infrastructure is substantially complete. The yellow shaded infrastructure is in construction. This is the Lift Station 12 project. We expect that to be substantially complete in 60 to 90 days. And the projects currently in design are the west gravity sewer, Phase 2, here in northwest Dickinson. That will advertise within the next three weeks. Lift Station 14 in northeast Dickinson, currently, currently dealing with right-of-way issues. And the Lift Station 5 project in south Dickinson, which we'll discuss more in a minute. South Dickinson wastewater infrastructure. In south Dickinson, south of the Hart River, there are three wastewater sewer sheds. Lift Station 4 sewer shed is shown as just shaded gray. Lift Station 5 sewer shed, and Lift Station, Lift Station 6 sewer sheds currently pump into Lift Station 4. The area shaded in yellow, our future projected growth, we have Spring Creek, Rolling Hills, city south, South Park, and Centennial. Additional areas are the commercial area, Long Highway 22, and a future development area towards the west. From this projected development, three projects were developed to serve this, this development. Project number one was an expansion of Lift Station 5. Lift Station 5 is currently at capacity and is in poor condition. Project number two is the south Dickinson gravity sewer. This would upgrade an existing gravity sewer. The existing gravity sewer has about 300 gallons per minute of remaining capacity. This remaining capacity is enough to serve Spring Creek, Phase 1 of Rolling Hills, and Phase 1 of South Park. Future phases would require an upgrade in capacity in this gravity sewer. The third project would occur when the commercial area along Highway 22, when or if sewer service is brought to this area, the Highway 22 gravity sewer would be constructed. And when this gravity sewer is constructed, it would be fairly inexpensive to extend that to Lift Station 6, take Lift Station 6 out of service, and bring all of Lift Station 6 sewer shed through that gravity sewer to Lift Station 5. The Lift Station 5 upgrade project, planned with a firm capacity of 3 MGD, or 2,090 gallons per minute, that's the peak flow. This would be a wet wall, valve vault type design with submersible pumps, with a wood frame building and a standby generator. Here we have a basic wet wall, valve vault type pump station. The wastewater comes in through the gravity sewer, dumps into the wet wall. We have a submersible pump that pumps the wastewater through the valve vault and out into the force main. For maintenance, the pumps are drawn up through the hatch into the ground level area. This superstructure is a wood frame building, an area where you can pull a vehicle into to load pumps from the wet wall, and then an electrical room off to the side. And this is what the superstructure would look like. Pretty straightforward. We have a control room here, and a garage door where vehicles can access the wet wall. Preliminary construction estimate. Construction costs with 5% contingencies is estimated at 1.9 million. With a 15% location factor, that would be 287,000, gives us a construction subtotal of just under 2.2 million. The last two jobs that we bid in Dickinson, we didn't use the whole location factor. The projects we've bid in this part of the state so far this year, we've gotten a lot of interest and a lot of contractors going after the work. So that's a good sign. We have design and construction admin of 306,000 for a total project cost of 2.5 million. This project was incorporated into the state revolving loan fund, loan, so it's funded as, as, same with the other projects on the collection system. For project schedule, planning to advertise late May of 2015, open bids June 2015, move into awarding contracts, and a substantial completion of March 2016. Final completion of July of next year. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. Mr. Kessel, do we have Lift Station number 5 at $2.5 million on our capital projects? Is that one of our 2015 projects?
President Johnson, it is on our list. I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me, so I don't recall the exact number, but that does sound reasonable. I'd have to verify that specifically.
But is it on, is it on our list for 2015?
I believe that is the case, yes. I can, I'll... I can, I'll run to the office and grab that list, just to make sure. I don't want to say anything incorrect, but I also wanted to make a comment that the significance of it being funded by the revolving loan fund is we've already made a rate adjustment to include this item. So there wouldn't be another rate adjustment needed to fund this construction. But I can go get that list so that I can tell you accurate.
Yeah, well, we also, I understand, you know, we have the option to finance it through the State Revolving Fund, but there's also a limit to the amount of debt that we want to take. I mean, this would also be eligible to be funded by state impact, oil impact money, too.
That's correct.
But I just, I'd like to know if we had it on the, on the 2015 list. You're going to check that out? Okay. So are there questions from Mr. Berg as it relates to the project itself, the engineering?
Just one other question. Want to make sure I understood it right. Lift Station 5 is getting ready to bid. The gravity project, though, is not.
That's correct. The gravity project could be development-driven. There's capacity, there's some capacity remaining at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask you a question about the wastewater system that isn't specific to Lift Station number 5?
Sure.
Can you refresh our memories now? What's, what is going to happen with the lagoons now that we're operating the mechanical system? I guess I'm, you know, this year, when, when they turned over, we had quite an odor in town. And will, when we look to the future, are the lagoons still going to be there? And we still, or can you tell us about their use and that kind of thing?
Yes. The current plan is to retain the lagoons. The lagoons would be used only to capture peaks during a peak rain event. The primary driver of odors right now is that you've been loading those lagoons for years. From this point going forward, we won't normally load those lagoons with any wastewater. We would keep water in them so that we didn't damage the liner, get the liner dried out. And then during peak rain events, at some point in the future, you may need to shave peak rain events and send some of that into those ponds. And that could delay a wastewater treatment plant upgrade.
Rather than running the stormwater through the mechanical plant.
Right, yeah.
But at any rate, we're not loading it with human waste that would causes the odors.
Right, right. So our peak wastewater flows are all during rain events. Right now, the wastewater treatment facility has the capacity to handle those peak rain events and normal wastewater flows. But as we get closer to the plant capacity, we will likely use those ponds to shave the peaks. And those peaks will be predominantly rainwater. There'll be wastewater mixed in, but vast majority of it is rainwater.
And then we've been operating the mechanical plant, I think, since November, December. How's it doing in, from your view?
It's doing very well. The, it's operating well, the water quality is excellent. We are pumping water out to the refinery, and that reuse water quality has been excellent as well.
Mr. Kessel.
President Johnson, it is our 13th ranked project in 2015, and we have a budget of 2.6 million dollars.
Okay. So we should be good to go on this one then. So are there any other questions for Mr. Berg? All right, thank you for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the non-time table agenda. We'll go back to the rezoning petition. We've had the public hearing, that's been closed. We were just discussing the project amongst ourselves. Is there other discussion by commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding about that lot inventory. The majority of those lots do not have water in sewer. They're, they're still hayfields, the majority of those. Just so there's no misunderstanding about that. Some of it's a lot closer than others, of course, but I want to make sure there's no impression that they're ready to build on or anything like that. Some are, but the majority is not.
Do we have a sense of how many lots are ready to be built on?
Today?
Today, yes.
Mr. President, commissioners, that's a hard one to answer because there are some that are available to be built on as we speak. And, and, you know, some of the, the developers have decided not to do that, to wait off on that a little. So it's, it's a tough question to answer.
It's kind of an important question, though, to try to answer because, you know, we listened to the Barron's principal investor two weeks ago, say, if we give them approval, they will start immediately. So we would have, in the not-too-distant future, we would start to see lots that can be developed. If, if we have a sufficient inventory of developed lots, or lots that are, we can expect are going to be developed in a reasonable period of time, then perhaps we have enough to accommodate a growing population.
It's an important question. There are a number of other questions you have to add to that. How many are available today? How many will be available by midsummer?
Right.
How many will be available by fall, by next spring? Which is probably the soonest any of the Barron's lots would truly be ready. So, you know, you have to look at it a lot of different ways.
Okay, so if we said a year from now, how many would be available? Do we have a sense of what that might be?
And we would have to answer that by saying that developers have the intention, have given us the indication that they will have X number ready.
I think the other interesting thing you would have to look at with those other lots that are hayfields, and you'd have to go back and look at the development agreement and who's responsible for the infrastructure. Because if we as the city are responsible for developing the infrastructure to what you referred to as hayfields, it's a lot different than looking at a developer that in our development agreement with Barron's, we're saying they're responsible for the access points, they're responsible for the municipal hookups. They're shouldering all of the financial responsibility if we allow them to move forward. So they're, they're taking the risk, and it's a lot different than having a hayfield that doesn't have a development agreement that we may be responsible for initiating and aim for the infrastructure that goes into those. That's, that's going to be a key factor in whether those lots are developed or not. This one, I would say, if you're putting the precipice on the developer and they're shouldering all the responsibility, their responsibility, do the math to make sure it all works out, too.
And the perspective I would put on that, because another good point. Perspective I would put on that is that by the end of this summer, we're still doing a lot of core infrastructure work. By the end of this summer, I think every lot on that list will be ready from the city standpoint. They'll still have their internal water sewer streets to build. But with the work that we've done the last two years, and the work that we'll finish by the end of this construction season, offhand, I can't think of a development here that wouldn't be ready from the standpoint of city infrastructure. Maybe, maybe there are some, but the vast majority would be ready.
But can you say, Mr. Jackson, that you thought at least 50% of them would have no intention of developing the lots?
You know, once you get beyond looking at the numbers, now it starts being subjective. You may have a different opinion than I do about developer X or subdivision X as to whether or not it's really going to happen. My opinion is that there's a good 50% of these that we won't see near-term development. Now, I'll add this. In the last two or three weeks, Mr. Kessel and I have been trying to meet with most developers, just to see what their plans are and all. And there are a couple that have said, "We're not going to do anything, not with these oil prices." But there have been more than I thought there would be who have said, "We are undaunted, we're going to proceed." And of course, you know, you have to decide still how likely that is.
And I think that's key, that those developers said it was based on the oil prices and so on, where the developer from Barron's Vista said the oil prices really didn't concern them as much. It was outside money coming in and, you know, so I, you know. With this developer, Barron's Vista, they're willing to put together a development, agree with us, and, you know, meet our requirements or what we recommend and so on. We didn't get that from all the other developers, apparently. You know, so I'm really struggling with not saying yes to this development when we have a lot of developers. We don't know what they're going to do and so on. I, I don't want to use the word penalize these people, but, you know, they may come out and produce 10, 15 homes a year here, or more, to where, I mean, if 50% of them are not being used, or we don't think they're going to be used, maybe that puts us behind the ball if we think that this oil is going to rebound. Put us back behind the ball where we were a year ago. And, you know, so.
And I think to add on to that, Carson, you know, this is a developer that is going to shoulder all the financial responsibility and infrastructure costs, the what do we have to lose if they are, you know, it's different when we were doing development impact fees, and we were trying to get the ball rolling and making some concessions from the city standpoint to get developments up and running. Let's rest all on that.
The only other concern I have with this development is that they come to an agreement on the 30th and 50th Street with, with Mr. Althod and the city and so on, and get that settled. And I'm sure they're, they want to take a look at it, and I, of course, we're just going to vote to approve the rezoning, not development agreement at this time. So there's a lot of things that can be added or taken away that affect us here, so.
You know, I just point out to you again, the arithmetic, that even if half the lots are developed in the next two or three years, that's enough for another 10,000, 12,000 people.
Yeah, I think conservative estimate is about 9,000 people. It's still a bit, it's a big number.
You know, regardless how this comes out tonight, I know what's really important to me is that we as a commission accept that there is a time that we say enough is enough. Whether it's tonight or not, I don't know. We each make our own call on that. But we didn't do that very well once before. And there are ramifications, whether they are empty subdivisions that are still hayfields, or subdivisions that have all the water in sewer installed, even though the developer pays for it, but maybe only have a smattering of homes in them. That's, that's a drag on the city if that happens. We're never going to get this exactly right.
I guess to address one of the concerns that was brought up during the public hearing, too, about, you know, shoddiness of construction and cheapness of the homes and to get them into that price. You know, one of the things that gives me some confidence with our city staff is that, for one, Ed Cortan left us with a very good set of regulations. We do a very good job of inspecting projects as, as they're being built. And I couldn't see city staff letting something that was subpar or not up to construction grade. You know, they probably won't be brick houses, but if they're stick-built, there are still minimum qualifications and minimum standards that we have to meet.
And that's a question that we can ask about any development on this list.
Right.
We don't know. And again, we have to remember, all we're doing when we approve this is putting a color on the map. All we're doing is deciding the land use. We do not know what kind of home is going to go on these lots. We don't know what the development's going to be like. So if we want to talk about worrying about quality, you can pick any development on the list.
Right.
Commissioner Altman, just to clarify, I know that presentation earlier said that there would be $180,000 homes. I think that's where Barron's Vista started. But in his presentation of two weeks ago, he said 280,000.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear that they're not intending to build $180,000 homes anymore.
I think it, the biggest thing is that they're appealing to that first-time home buyer to kind of marry up with the commercial development there, to get the housing there that's affordable for those workers that are going to possibly occupy that and get employed right in that area. So, I, I mean, I moved back here in, in 98, and there's, there's land zone here that has been sitting there since 98. And there's stuff that's recent, and there's dirt moving, so. I think they, with the agreement, we can get some good affordable housing.
Other comments? Are you ready for a motion? So is there a motion then regarding second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1573?
So move.
Are you moving to approve?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
No.
Chair votes nay. Motion carries three to two. Okay. So we're moved to Item C, surplus property. Mr. Coling.
Mr. President, commissioners, what you have before you is a declaration of surplus property pursuant to our code, Section 2.28. The Board of City Commissioners can declare surplus property and allow the city to sell that property at auction or by other means that are authorized by the city administrator. You do have a schedule of property that is attached to the resolution. As you'll see, it is a fairly long set of surplus property. Most of it coming from the police department, items that they have catalogued into evidence that are no longer necessary and have not been reclaimed by their owners. And also, items from our Public Works Department. A lot of this property has to do with moving facilities and as new property is purchased for the new Public Works Building, some of the old property that was used in the, the old facility has now become surplus. As well, there are a couple of equipment items from the fire department, and they have requested that those items be sold as well. In the event that this resolution is adopted, we do have a preliminary plan to have an auctioneer take this property and sell it at public auction, and then apply the funds to other city purposes. This would be Resolution 12 point, or 12-2015, for your records. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Any comments, questions? Not, is there a motion regarding resolution twelve dash 2015?
A motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to item D, 2015, senior citizen grants. Mr. Kessel will introduce this.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioner. As, as we do on an annual basis, the city of Dickinson returns some of the sales tax collections that we have over the course of a year back to the senior citizens of the area. And we've, we've done that through this grant process for several years. We're approaching almost ten years, actually, in just a couple of years. We have a list that's been provided to you. We have a slightly depressed amount of applications, which is a little bit surprising, but even though the ones that we have received represent a higher dollar request than we had in years past. What you have, what we recommend is awards totaling $53,100. They are listed out for you. That is a number that's about 3,000 higher than, than last year's awards. I do want to recognize the committee that makes the recommendations that are before you today. And Renee Schmidt from Badlands Human Service Center, Lisa, and I'm going to, I apologize right now for not pronouncing her name accurately, but Lisa Barret from Elder Care also assists us. And Grant Brown from Dunn Center is all on the committee. And so these recommendations come from that board and they are all related to the senior citizens in some way, providing services to these groups in some way. So unless you have any specific questions about the grants themselves, they are listed there before you and was our recommendation to approve.
Mr. Kessel, what am I missing? You've got on the list here, it's $43,950 and your remarks that you said $53,100.
I'm sorry, the fifty-three was the application amount, not, not the award amount. That was my mistake. We, we had applications for $53,100. We did not award that full amount. So it is a little less than, than the number applied for.
So this $43,950 is the correct amount?
Yes, that would be an accurate number.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kessel? So would there be a motion then to approve the awards in the amount of $43,950 as listed here?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. So now we go to item E, and this is regarding our audit contract. And Mr. Kessel, we'll let you take this one also.
Thank you, President Johnson. I have, as you have before you, is an engagement lender for Aid Bailey. They have been providing our city audit for several years. This is the version that would allow them to perform the 2014 city audit. This does include a, because of the amount of grant awards we received, it exceeds or triggers an additional audit. So you'll notice that in the pricing, the audit itself is $22,500 and then there is an additional amount of $3,500, and that is to conduct that secondary audit related to grant receipts. Assuming that this audit document is approved this evening, that they project that they'll be here April 27th to begin this audit, and we have been making preparations as best we can for that audit to, to begin. We have been satisfied with Aid Bailey's work product in the past. If we've had any issues, it's with their timeliness of the completion of the audit. And starting in April 27th, we're convinced that they'll do a nice job of being timely this year. So it is our recommendation that we engage Aid Bailey to perform our 2014 audit. If there's any questions, I'll take them.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments, questions? If not, is there a motion regarding this contract?
Make the motion to approve. I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Get down to item F then, and this is an engineering and project management contract with the KLJ firm. And Mr. Kessel is also going to introduce this.
Thank you, President Johnson. This is essentially similar to the task order that engaged KLJ originally. I'd like to point out three major or essential differences. The first is that there is a 60-day notice period if we are able to bring these services back in-house. It would be our intentions to attempt to do that in 2015. So we would advertise for these positions and attempt to bring them in-house. And if we are able to identify a staff member to fill those duties, we could then provide KLJ with a 60-day notice. That would be specific to each of the positions that are provided. So in other words, if, if Mr. Kubis' position, if we were able to fill that, we would still retain the services of, of Mr. Millstone or vice versa. So that's important. The other important piece is that the contract price has been reduced by $9,000 a month. That's a significant reduction from our first or initial contract. So we, we were paying 40 and now we would pay 31, assuming approval. And then the last item I just want to point out is the task order terminates on December 31st of 2015. So it essentially brings these services throughout the remainder of the calendar year. They've done an excellent job. I'm very pleased with the services that both Mr. Kubis and Mr. Millstone have provided to the city. We're, we're lucky to have them. And I'd like to see us engage KLJ with their current staff as this contract states. So if there's any questions, I would like to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion regarding this contract?
Mr. President, move or approve contract.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Is there any discussion?
I'll abstain from the vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Olman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. The chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Go to item G, and this is reports by the city administrator. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson. First, I'll start with the legislative update. We are winding down at the legislative level. There are very few actual committee meetings being held. They're actually starting to schedule conference committee meetings, which is, which is really nice because it means that the conclusion is, is out there and very imminent. The one bill that I do want to report on specifically, of course, is the House Bill 1176. This is the formula bill. This is the one we've been, this is the second of two very important legislation for western North Dakota. That bill did pass on the Senate floor today, forty-seven to zero. That is significant, obviously. And there are some recap of the bill that I want to share with you. The first is that the distribution was 25% to local political subdivisions. It stayed at 30% as it was passed by the House. So we'll, we'll see a 5% increase in the amount of dollars being returned to political entities in western North Dakota. The other significant thing that happened is in oil hub cities, they retained the $375,000 of employment, but they did expand it to oil and gas-related employment. It's not just mining. And that mining number did serve to make that percentage quite, quite a bit smaller. This, this will broaden out that category and allow for additional reimbursement. For non-oil-producing counties, hub cities in non-oil-producing counties, they did use $250,000 per percentage of oil and gas employment. That's significant for other communities in, in our area, but not necessarily for the city of Dickinson. They did approve a number of 125,000 on the same percentage basis for hub city school districts. The, I think the other thing that I just wanted to mention is they did establish $140 million in impact grant funds, of which airports, schools, law enforcement, hospitals and such are eligible for. As a oil hub city, we are not eligible for that funding. So, so we wouldn't be able to apply. But that's just kind of a brief update of 1176.
I have a question.
Sure.
There was another item in the bill that the House had changed, and that was the, the percentage of the, what's now the 30% that went to oil hub cities, the actual formula. And 9% of that was going to oil hub cities. The House changed it to 7%. Do you know how the Senate passed it out?
I apologize. I do not know that number. I did make a phone call to try and verify that exact question. I have not received a return. So it's an important piece of, of the legislation that I can't answer for you.
Yeah, because in, in the current law, it's 25%, but the oil hub cities get 9%, of which Dickinson gets 30% of that.
Correct.
And so if it's now 30%, but instead we get 7%, you know, I'm not so sure we've received an increase.
I will certainly verify that for you and communicate it as soon as I get an answer.
Because this, the way that the process works, now this bill is, the way the Senate passed it is different from the way the House passed it. The House will have an opportunity to accept the Senate changes and concur. If they fail to concur, then it will go to a conference committee. But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't sound like the Senate changed it a whole lot.
No, they did not. I, I don't think that a conference committee is eminent.
So they're, they're likely to concur and it's a done deal.
There are some proposals being made with regard to triggers. We've talked about those several times. I just read an article about a Democratic trigger sponsored by the Democratic Party that if it does reach 1.2 million barrels of production, that it would move that number to 40% going to local political entities as opposed to the 30 that is now passed both the Senate and the House. The likelihood of that passing at this stage of the game, I think, is remote, but nevertheless, those discussions are occurring. I'll continue on unless there's any other questions. Related to the surplus property item that was on your agenda earlier, we are also intending to sell the Baker Building. The Baker Building is located on the north side of Broadway and immediately adjacent to the school bus barn. This is a property that we did intend to sell. The idea was, when the Public Works Building was created, that we could divest ourselves from this building and then use the proceeds to pay down the debt that we incurred from the Public Works Building. We have had a, an appraisal or done by city staff, Mr. Hirschfeld from the assessment side. So we, we hope to put this building up for sale in the very near future and take advantage of, of the spring buying. I also wanted to make you aware of an error that has occurred at the state level with regard to our occupancy and hospitality tax. This error was uncovered by the state tax department when they upgraded some of their processing systems. And one of our hotels was, was coded incorrectly. And so the receipts from that hotel, the tax receipts, were actually going to the city of Devil's Lake instead of coming to the city of Dickinson. So this, this occurred in April of 2011, and since that time, the city of Devil's Lake has been receiving the, the tax funds related to those two collections. Once it was identified in October of 2014, the state tax department did approach the city of Devil's Lake, admitted their error to the city of Devil's Lake, and then negotiated with them a repayment terms. The repayment terms that were agreed to was a $5,000 a month repayment. So that will end in August of 2016, and then there'll be a partial payment in September of $1,767. Now, the total amount that has been or will be repaid is $111,766.80. That consists of $74,000, $74,511.20 in lodging tax receipts and $37,255.60 in restaurant and/or lodging tax, which we call hospitality tax. So I've been in contact with Ryan Rochenberger from the state tax department. He's provided me with the nice summary and the details that I've provided to you. So we will receive and have been receiving since December of 2014 an extra $5,000 a month in repayment based on this error. So unless you have any questions, the error was identified, calculated, and where the correction has taken place. If there's no questions, then I'd like to, I'm actually quite pleased to announce the hiring of two key members of the leadership team. The first is Walter Hadley. He has accepted the position of planning director. He will begin his employment with the city of Dickinson on May 4th. He comes to us most immediately from our northern neighbor of McKenzie County. He has 22 years of experience in city planning and several years at the county level. He's had the task of trying to bring zoning to a county that's never had zoning in McKenzie County. And so he, he has a great deal of experience working in a very fast-paced growth environment. And so we're, we're excited to see him begin his work on May 4th. The other is, I'd like to announce the hiring of Mr. Doug Valeski as the deputy city administrator for finance and administrative services. This is a long time coming. He will begin his work on April 27th. Mr. Valeski has been working for the state of Montana for three decades. He has a lot of experience in public finance and specifically in their IT department for the state of Montana. He actually has experience. He, he went to school at Southart. So he has a lot of relatives in our area and very familiar with our environment. He has family in, in Bismarck and in Fargo as well. So this is a homecoming of sorts for Mr. Valeski. Both will, will start very soon and we're very excited to have those positions filled. So with your passage tonight of the engineering management contract with KLJ that shores up four members of our leadership team. That would, I only have one other item, and at, at the risk of a flying stapler, I would like to just make mention that Rita Binstock is having a rather significant birthday today. And I'm not going to tell you which one it is, but congratulations, Rita.
Congratulations, Rita, on your 30th birthday. Did I get it right?
Yeah, that sounds great. I don't want any staplers coming in my way. That would conclude my report unless there's any questions.
So any comments, questions for the city administrator? Oh, very good. We'll go to public safety and Chief Seavock will present the annual report.
Mayor Johnson, commissioners, hopefully you all received your copy of our annual report. Tonight, we won't do a page-by-page recap of the annual report with our PowerPoint presentation, but rather a summary of some of the important items in the report as soon as we can get the PowerPoint to come up. It's not available? Okay. I'd like to come back with that at a different time. If there's any questions, yeah, we can do it that way, commissioners.
If, if you, it's an important report... That's fine with us.
Okay, thank you.
Well, then, we're on to engineering, and Item A has to do with sidewalk replacement program. Mr. Kuvas will introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, as you know, we've been talking about the sidewalk replacement program for several months now. It's been a couple of years, three years, I think, to be exact, since we've done this program. This is a program where the homeowners who have sidewalk and curb and gutter that's deteriorated, damaged, can apply for the, for the city program and use the city's contractor to replace their sidewalks and put that on their special assessments to, to spread the cost over five years. We bid that project on March 31st and only received one bid from Wynn Construction. We had estimated, we had a budget of approximately $100,000, so that, we tweaked our program to have our engineer's estimate equal $100,000, and the bid we received from Wynn Construction was in the amount of $76,245. Staff has developed a request form for applicants, property owners, to apply for the, the concrete replacement of their sidewalks and/or curb and gutter. As of right now, we're planning on filling that program on a first-come, first-served basis unless we see that we have an overwhelming response wherein we might step into, to, to advance the, the most needed or the, the concrete that's in the worst shape to advance those projects first. But right now, we're planning on, on accepting applications on a first-come, first-served basis. So, we recommend to the Commission to accept the low bid of Wynn Construction in the amount of $76,245.
Thank you, Mr. Kuvas. You've heard his report and his recommendation. Do you have any comments or questions? Is there a motion regarding this item then?
Motion to approve. A second.
With the motion and the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Mr. Kuvas, we'll let you go to Item C.
Mr. President, Commissioners, Item C is a report on a special improvement district that we're looking to create. Several months ago, we've tasked Apex Engineering Group with the, the design of Westgate Avenue. It includes a frontage road, and this is in the area of Dickinson Ready Mix. Most of the property in this proposed improvement district would be property owned by Dickinson Ready Mix or a company associated with Dickinson Ready Mix. There's a couple of other properties involved as well. Right now, we've taken this project to the point, I would say plus or minus 50% engineering, to the point where we developed a, a very solid cost estimate. And so, the process again, and, and we went through this last year on 40th Street, this is a somewhat different project, but the process now is, as a commission, to, to take a look at this. If you feel it's a worthy project, we have costs, we have cost per lot breakouts in this engineering report. I guess if, if we see or hear consensus from you tonight, we'll bring this forward as a resolution, Mr. Bulling, to create a district at the next meeting. At that point, it would invoke a 30-day protest period wherein the, the property owners in the district would be able to come back and through a written protest, be able to protest the project out if they would so desire. So, if you have any questions on the, the costs or exactly what the project would entail, I'd be happy to answer those now, or if you, if you need a couple more weeks to review the preliminary engineering report, have any questions at the next meeting, you could also answer questions at that time.
What is the cost estimate at this point?
It's, it's roughly $1 million. That includes all the administrative and engineering costs. The exact amount in the estimate is $1,035,000.
Is Westgate the, the street that is the principal access from the Dickinson Ready Mix property onto the bypass?
Correct. There, there's another private access, but it's.
Right.
The sole public access.
And is that the one where a lot of the mud and dust is, comes from?
Well, it, most likely, yeah. There, there's obviously a lot of truck traffic coming out of there.
But this would hard surface that.
This would hard surface that. The intent right now, as, as we've asked Apex to, to take this forward through design, is that it would be a concrete street. While it's not a terribly high-volume street, almost entirely truck traffic, I would, you know, 75% truck traffic on, on not only Westgate Avenue, but on the frontage road south of the business loop, which is partially paved right now as a, as a concrete street as well.
Well, he's asking if, should go further with this, well, what's your feedback?
Chairman, we've, we've talked about special assessments pro and con in the past, and to me, this is a kind of situation that we absolutely should be using this process and proceed. I think we have a few others like this frankly, small projects relatively, and we should be proceeding this way.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else?
It's going to be an important street when the overpass is put in too, because this is how some of those businesses get their access point to, and we, it's a very important one to get done.
And I think, critical to any of these projects, any of these improvement districts, I think there's been good communication already with property owners, has there not?
We, we've sent out letters and, and had directed Apex Engineering Group to, to go out and meet with the property owners. I've gotten some calls from, from the property owners as well, so I think everyone in this district is aware of the project and has been aware of it for, for quite a while now. Of course, special assessments are never a, a popular thing. We'd all like to not have to deal with them, but seems like a, a good fit for this type of a project.
Any other feedback for the city engineer? Well, I, I too would encourage you to go forward, so.
I think we'll, we'll have a resolution then prepared for your action at the next meeting.
All right. And is there no KLJ Task Order Number W-10 on the agenda tonight? The, the one on the computer didn't have it, or on the notebook, but here on the green sheets, we have this.
I, I know Ms. Marshick was, was not able to be at the meeting tonight. I was prepared to talk about it, I don't know if it was on the agenda. I thought it was.
It's, it's not here on the materials that were sent to us electronically, but, but it's on the printed sheet. So what are we doing?
Engineer Kuvas, are you prepared to speak to it?
I, I am. Again, it's a KLJ task order. I think if it's on our, our agenda, we probably need to act on it one way or the other, whether it's continuing it or tabling it. But, the, the task order was for the design of a railroad utility crossing. Again, it's, it's another project on our capital improvement list, actually for 2015, and as we initially got notice from Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad last summer that they were going to make some expansion to their track, I think we had around a dozen crossings that we, we were on notice that we might need to make an improvement to. As it turns out, as, as Burlington Northerns went through their design, and we've looked at our permits and our crossings and the pipelines and their, their depths, we found that we've only had to modify two crossings, thankfully. One of them is at State Avenue, which is getting redone with the State Avenue Railroad Bridge. The other is at Sixth Avenue Southeast, or Sixth Avenue East, and that was this task order. Right now, we're carrying it as our number one priority project as, as almost a legal mandated project. What we're hoping to do, while we're initiating a task order for a separate project, what we're hoping to do is, is to get some costing, to do a change order onto the project that's carrying water to the east side of town right now. We have a contractor that's literally right there, less than 50 feet away from where this project would need to be. And what it would do is, there's an eight-inch water main from, I'm taking the date off of memory, but from the 1930s, maybe 1940s, very old. We ran it through our water model, looked like a 12-inch would provide some nice benefit to the area north of Vallard, so we'd take that line out of service, replace it with a 12-inch water main. And if we get, I guess, agreeable unit pricing from our contractor that we have under contract right now, we'd change order it onto the, what we're calling the east side water distribution project. That, the task orders for the design, I believe there's construction engineering in it as well. I'm not too familiar with the task order, but I'm familiar with the background of it, so. I know a rep from KLJ is here as well, if you wanted to have some Q and A on the task order itself.
Does KLJ have any more information to provide?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jerry Creek with Countermeasure Lee Jackson. We do have a probable opinion of cost at about $300,000 for construction, included in with engineering and the other fees, about $370,000. So, I don't know if that's the information you're looking for. Also, we do have a tentative completion date for the preliminary plans of April 15th, so we're hoping it gets acted on today.
I, I would say too, that we, we were carrying, again, you, you looked up the numbers, Mr. Kessel, but I believe we were carrying $2 million for these projects. It sounds like this crossing, on early estimates, will come in less than a million. I think the State Avenue improvements are right around a million, so in total, for the, for the two projects that involve railroad utility crossings, it looks like we'd be about $700,000 below what we were budgeting, so.
That's good news. All right, so, we're looking for a motion regarding KLJ Task Order Number W-10. Would there be a motion to either approve or disapprove this task order?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion?
Again, I'll abstain, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. The chair votes aye, so the motion carries. Don't believe there are any other engineering items?
Um.
Or are there?
Well, yeah, there's always more engineering items. I, I know we have a, a citizen in the audience today that maybe doesn't want to wait till the end of the meeting. That would be an engineering-related concern if you wanted to address it now or, or wait to the end, I guess.
No, we can, we can take that now, so you go, go ahead and introduce it.
Okay, well, I guess, I think it made the paper here. Last Thursday, we had an accident in an area where we've had accidents in the past, and we, we addressed this last year. This is on South State Avenue between Diamond Drive and 8th Street Southwest. Last year, maybe even 15 months ago, we moved forward with the project to develop something that would, would try and keep off, vehicles from running off the road. And last year, we, we did some tree plantings, and later in the year, in the fall, we installed three cable guardrail. And for the entire block, almost essentially from Diamond Drive to, to 8th, and on Thursday, there was a vehicle, it ran off the road again. I looked at the site, I know Brent Colter, our Streets Department Manager, was at the site as well. Looks to me to be what I'd call very excessive speeds. I don't know if, if there's been any, any calculations on that, but car went through the guardrail that was installed, it, it actually, it, I would say it clipped it at the very end of the guardrail, at the, where the, the guardrail is bolted down to the ground, where the guardrail is not the most effective. And it sheared those bolts off that's actually connected to a, a concrete acre with, with nine, nine bolts, you know, pretty good-sized bolts. It sheared those bolts off, went through one of the trees we planted, sheared a steel T-post off right at the ground, went over the berm that's there, and into, through a fence and into a shed of one of the residents. And, so right now, I just looked at it today, I think we'll, we'll go back to the drawing board. I met with a couple of the, the landowners. I know that the folks on that block are, are on edge, to say the least. And, I, I'm just not sure we can design an engineering solution to keep vehicles that are going two and three and maybe faster than that, times the speed limit. They're, they're just excessively fast vehicles that, I guess what we had designed and put in place, didn't work on this one. And we'll, we'll look at other solutions potentially. We need to fix what we have right now. I've, I've been told this was in uninsured motorists, so the costs of our replacement on our end for our infrastructure, our trees and our guardrail there, I don't know if we, if we go through the insurance reserve fund or if there's a, a fund at the city that makes that worthwhile, but.
Okay.
That's my update on our engineering concerns.
All right. The citizen, did they want to speak to this or add anything that you've told?
Mr. Grass is in the audience. I don't know if he wants to come up and say a word if he has information to share with you, but I'd visited with, with his family this morning, so.
Maybe we put just enough rail in off when he headed, he turned from the home.
Mr. Mayor, Chairman, Commissioner, yeah, Kerry Grass and I was the, it was our, our home that, that vehicle went through the, through our, tore out about 20, 20 feet of our fence, and, yeah, like Mr. Kuvas said, I, we, we don't know how fast it was going. We can just go by what the highway patrol and the police that are there together, and he was going at least 80 mile an hour when he went through that. I guess we're just very lucky. The way it went, it went into our shed, our patio window's right beside that, it could have went through that. We were also fortunate that nobody was home, so we got lucky there also.
What time of day did this occur?
About 3:30.
In the morning or?
No, in the afternoon.
Afternoon.
Yeah, which we would have never guessed. You all are probably familiar with my neighbor Gary Zen, was, had, he was a citizen in here about a year ago or so, that, that, you know, brought up about, you know, getting something done, and I, I've been living there 23 years. Our house has been there another 11 years, I believe, it was built in 81. We've never had any concerns in our 23 years there, so I wasn't too concerned about everything. But I was very appreciative of what you all did to get that guardrail up and the trees up for my neighbors to the south. I guess I wasn't too concerned. The only, the only thing I was questioning was when you did all that, and if you go up State's Avenue, right before it curves to the right, I, I always thought, you know, you brought that, you brought that down right where I thought, you know, if somebody doesn't make that curve and go straight, they're right for my backyard. And but, 23 years, nothing's ever happened, I wasn't too concerned about it. Well, now it's happened, and, you know, I, Mr. Kuvas says engineering-wise, there's nothing you could do. I always just thought, well, why didn't they just come around with all three of those lines, you know, and go a little further? So if somebody did run off that, I, I was thinking those three cable lines and, and a post would definitely slow somebody down where, yeah, they might hit my fence, but they're not going to come in the yard and, and, you know, do damage. So, but I don't know, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if that would work. But, my goal here tonight was just to come and bring up my concerns, and, but with, Mr. Kuvas was already aware of it through my wife, and so, you know, he, he's already on top of it. And so, where it goes from here, you know, I don't know, I just think, yeah, something has to be done. I don't think a brick wall needs to be put there to put a motorist in danger, but something to, at least if somebody is going that fast, it's going to stop them at least before they crash through somebody's backyard, you know. So, there's four houses there, and three of them now have been hit and had done damage and. And, you know, thank God, nobody's been killed yet, but I'm sure, when I look at my house, and I have pictures of it, if anybody wants to look at it, of everything, it was amazing that those people did not get hurt worse or killed. I was just simply amazed. Anyway.
Well, we thank you for being here. We're pleased that no one in your family, or your friends, or neighbors were injured. And I know Mr. Kuba's and the rest of us are very concerned, and we'll take our engineering resources along with those that the state can offer us, and see if we can come up with a more protective plan, short of that brick wall that you mentioned. Mr. Kuba's?
Well, and what Mr. Gress was referring to is bringing it around the corner. That can be done and doable. I think we might need to look at a different guardrail style then, because right now, if you're familiar with it, that guardrail's on the outside of the curve. And when you have guardrail on the outside of a curve or on a straight run, and you hit that cable, it should, in, you know, in a perfect world, catch that vehicle. If you put it on, if the curve goes the other direction, like it would need to, to kind of wrap around Diamond Drive at the end, you'd hit that, and the guardrail would have nothing else, you'd just get slack in the cable then. So we might have to look at, if we do wrap it around, a more rigid, what the DOT would call W-beam guardrail, which is the more common standard for highway purposes. Some concerns with it as well, catching snow and the like, but obviously, what we did didn't catch this vehicle and didn't hold it, so...
And if vehicles are, I mean, like I said, we've had three of these, and if, it's hard to believe that vehicles there can get going upwards of 80 miles an hour, but I guess there's no explaining human behavior, so...
No control there.
So we'll try to get a more protective solution here. We know with three of these, it's not, that's three too many, and it's in a relatively short period of time we've had these three happen.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Anything else, Mr. Kuba? You'll keep us informed of your progress with that issue, and...
We will, we will. I don't have anything further.
Okay. Brings us to Public Works. Mr. Coulter's here to present an item regarding a mini excavator. So welcome.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioners. We recently closed the bid for the purchase of a mini excavator. Primary use is going to be in our Buildings and Sites Division, and it will be mainly used for cemetery work. Out of the bids received, we received four in total. Three of them met all of the specifications. It's our recommendation that we go with the bid that was submitted by Butler Equipment Caterpillar. Delivery date is 4/25 of 2015, and the purchase price is $75,781.
Did you have a budget for this item?
About $100,000.
And the West Plains bid that didn't meet the specs, can you just tell us briefly what about the bid that didn't meet specs?
Administrative portion of the specifications, delivery date for the West Plains bid was June 10th of 2015, and that puts us approximately 60 days outside of our window. We wanted to take delivery within 30.
So, and it met all the mechanical specifications?
It did meet the mechanical specification. The reason administrative specs were specific in calling out the delivery date is we are already in talks with funeral directors in scheduling funerals. Going into June, waiting for a piece of equipment. If there are any delays into it, we're into July, and we're causing issues.
So we're doing all the burial sites now?
Yes, President Johnson, maybe some context would be helpful. We've traditionally, for years and years and years, have provided this service through a contract. It's been more and more difficult to get contractors to bid this service. The last bid that we received was for a three-year contract at $1 million over the course of three years. At that price, we felt that we could buy the equipment and provide this service in-house at a much less expense, and so that's why it appeared on the budget and why it's before you today.
And previous to this last bid, what had we been paying per year?
I don't remember the number right off the top of my head, but it was significantly less than that, maybe 300 for three years, not 300,000 per year. It was a very significant jump this year, or this bid cycle.
Well, those are all the questions I have. Commissioners have any other questions?
Mr. President, if we could, we have adequate staffing?
Yes.
Are we looking to hire someone to fill this?
No, currently, our Buildings and Sites Division has, actually, we just hired two new facility operators as well, so our numbers are actually better there now, but part of their regular duties is the maintenance of the cemeteries. Now, with the addition of the two new facility operators, it should be more than adequate for the care of those facilities.
Commissioner Decker, that was also considered in the budget process and why we asked for two new staff in that area, and you were generous enough to fund those. So staffing was anticipated.
Okay, would there be other questions, comments? Is there a motion regarding this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so I assume by approve, we're approving the recommendation. And the second, any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, that brings us to planning, and we have two items there, and Mr. Millstone will present those.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission members. The first item I have tonight is Plumber Acres subdivision. This is a final plat for the Plumber Acres subdivision. The site is generally located in northeast quarter of Section 18, Township 139 North, Range 96 East. The site is plus or minus five acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. And with that, I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone. Any questions regarding the Plumber Acres subdivision? This would be Resolution 13? Is that correct?
Mr. President, I believe this will be Resolution, yes, 13-2015.
Any questions or comments? Not, is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Move to approve resolution.
I'll second.
There's a motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Let's continue.
Mr. President, I'd like some advice on this next item, maybe yourself or Mr. Coling. Since we postponed the developers' agreement for Woodhaven, generally, that's a requirement of accepting or approving the final plat. So I can continue the reading, or, it's up to you, I guess, however you want to handle that.
Mr. President, Commissioners, I think the recommendation from staff would be to approve this plat, and since we don't have a development agreement yet, to include in your motion that approval would be contingent upon final adoption and approval of a development agreement.
Okay.
That being the case, then, this is the final plat for Woodhaven First Addition subdivision. The site is generally located in the southwest quarter of Section 26, Township 140 North, Range 96 East. The site is relative, is plus or minus 25 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. And once again, I'm here to, available to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions regarding this?
Can you just, I know this is an R1 subdivision, can you remind us how many lots this is?
They reduced it to 52. Used to be 54, and they took two out for a retention basin, so it's down to 52 lots now.
And I think that one of the sewer projects that Mr. Berg showed us tonight makes this viable, does it not?
That is correct. That'd be the 14th, 14 lift station.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So Mr. Coling's recommendation, if you're in favor of this, was to move, to approve Resolution 14-2015, contingent upon an acceptable development agreement. Did I get that right?
Correct, yes.
Anybody care to move that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just had one comment. I had met with the engineer that was working on this plat, and there was one lot line that we discussed, and this is on the north side of the property, discussed adding a drainage adjustment on there. They're doing some grading on the very north end of this, and he's looking into it. I don't think it'll affect the lots. These are large lots on the north side, 15,000 plus or minus square foot lots, and we'd add probably a 10-foot drainage, 15-foot drainage adjustment there. So just to be aware that that might be a change, that I would feel my recommendation that it essentially leaves the intent of the plat unchanged, but that might be a minor revision that comes between this approval and signatures on the plat, so...
Mr. Coling, do you think we need to do anything different with our motion with that information?
Mr. President, I'm comfortable with the motion as it is. I think engineering staff can work with the applicant to create that lot line adjustment.
Mr. President, I have one more comment. Planning staff believes that it should state that, the condition should state that recorrelation will not happen until the DA is approved.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion by Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Millstone?
And that's all I have today, Mr. President.
Okay, anything by Commissioners? I have one item on the tobacco ordinance change. I think there's going to be a little more community interest in that. I would suggest at the next meeting, we just have a hearing only, a public hearing, and then two meetings from now that, then we act on the second reading and final approval. But I suspect with it passing tonight, first reading with a 3-2 vote, we'll probably see a little more public interest in this, both sides, so... Is that okay, if we do that?
We'll make those changes on the...
All right. Any other comments by Commissioners? If not, is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. If no one from the public, chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. The motion carries or adjourn.